The ship.
Sounds like a good idea.
And if the location's right, we will then know if it's possible that the currents, dispersions, and coastal currents brought them onshore. Thanks, Dr. Moisen.
You're welcome. Glad I could help. Keep me posted.
Dr. D, we think we're close to solving the mystery.
That's great. What's the solution?
KSNN reported that the oil came from the Gulf of Mexico.
It was natural seepage. Well, we talked to Dr. Moisen and did some research and found out that the Loop Current, then the Florida Current, and finally the Gulf Stream might have brought it up to the East Coast.
But we're still investigating the shoes. I sent an email to the very good shoe company, and they said that 26 months ago, a container filled with their shoes fell overboard off the coast of North Africa.
We learned that on the eastern edge of the North Atlantic Ocean, by North Africa, the current flows south. Then the current flows west across the Atlantic before turning north into the Gulf Stream.
We learned at Water Country USA that the Gulf Stream moves pretty fast.
So we think that the shoes are probably the same ones that fell overboard off the coast of North Africa. But a little over two years seems like a long time to get to Virginia.
I know. I'll call Dr. Adamak. I'm sure he can help.
Good idea. If he confirms that it could take 26 months, then maybe the shoes and oil just happened to meet right here in Florida where I was.
And the shoes and the oil floated up the coast of Virginia?
That's our hypothesis.
Hi, Dr. Adamak. We have another question. How long does it take a floating object, like a shoe, to be carried by the currents from the coast of North Africa to Virginia?
It's impossible to give you an exact time, but given average currents, the winds, and the recent storm tracks, I would estimate about two years.
Thanks, Dr. Adamak. I think our case is solved.
You're welcome.
I'm glad I could help.
I have an idea. Maybe these numbers on the shoe label can be used to track the shoes. Let's email the very good shoe company, and let's see if they can confirm that these are the shoes that run the lost shipment.
Good idea, RJ. Doesn't hurt to continue to test your hypothesis just to make sure.
I wonder what happened to those rubber duckies that I am listening said fell overboard off the coast of Virginia?
Well, maybe some NASA SciFos Kids Club members in North Africa will find them some years in the future.
Wouldn't that be interesting?
Tony, have you given up your search for sunken treasure?
I'm glad you asked. Actually, I'm looking for someone financially gifted, like yourself, to help fund my project.
Well, I can't commit financially, but if you need a diving partner...
Right. Remember the buddy system, critical for diving. And it also helps you avoid the grumpy treehouse detective syndrome.
Grumpy? Me? I'm not grumpy. I'm the perfect picture of composure. I mean, stock market fluctuations have you going, let's hope.
Ready? So, call to order Sparks Planning Commission Meeting Thursday, September 15, 2016. Roll call.
Commissioner Camerota?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Ewen?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Spatter?
Here.
Commissioner Mandarwell?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Forman?
Here.
Assistant City Services Director Tom Alderman?
Here.
Public comment. This item is either for a public comment on any action item or for the general public comment, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. There being none. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to change some of the sequence. I would like to move to 10, 9, and 8, so reverse those three items. If I could make a motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries or will be a revision to the items, to the order of the agenda. We'll note those as we go. Item number five, approval of minutes. Review and possible approval of the revised minutes of the August 4, 2016 Planning Commission Workshop and the minutes of August 18, 2016.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve.
Do we need two of those?
Chair, I'd like you to do it separately.
Okay. There was a run-on sentence. Excuse me. Go back to the August 4, 2016 Planning Commission Workshop.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the August 4, 2016 Planning Commission Workshop minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of August 4, 2016 Planning Commission Workshop have been approved. Minutes of the August 18, 2016 Planning Commission Meeting for Possible Action.
Mr. Chairman, for approval, I would like to make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, announcements and committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, we have no announcements and committee reports, nor do we have any informational items.
All right. That gets us to the revised agenda. Item number 10, going out of sequence. Item number 10, presentation of resolution number 212, commending Commissioner Doug Vols for his service on the City of Sparks Planning Commission. Would you like to come forward, Mr. Vols?
Yeah. Right there. Whereas Doug Vols was appointed to the Sparks Planning Commission on March 23, 2009, and he continuously served since that date. And whereas Commissioner Vols served as Chair of the Planning Commission in 2012. And whereas Commissioner Vols has served on a regional planning commission since July 1, 2009. And whereas Commissioner Vols has unselfishly committed his time and knowledge to making significant contributions to the planning process for the City of Sparks during his tenure as member of the Sparks Planning Commission. And whereas the Sparks Planning Commission meets on a regular basis, requiring Commissioner Vols' attendance at many public hearings, workshops, and study sessions. And whereas Commissioner Vols participated in the Sparks Planning Commission's review of numerous major projects in Sparks, including the Sparks Transit Oriented Development Corridor Master Plan, and overall of the Sparks Municipal Code Title 20, the rolling back of the East Truckee River Canyon Sphere of Influence, and the Sparks 2016 Comprehensive Plan. And whereas Commissioner Vols was always available as a mentor, sharing his experience and knowledge. And whereas every member of the Sparks Planning Commission, present and past, is proud to have served with Commissioner Vols. And whereas the Sparks Planning Commission recognizes Commissioner Vols' contribution to the Planning Commission and to the City of Sparks. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sparks Planning Commission acknowledges and sincerely appreciates the invaluable contributions that Commissioner Doug Vols has made to the City of Sparks during his tenure as Planning Commissioner, passed and adopted this 15th day of September 2016 by the City of Sparks Planning Commission.
Congratulations. Good job, buddy.
You know your real name's Quinn.
I know.
Well, in addition to that...
Good job, buddy.
We have a recognition plaque for you.
Not either-or. I have to take both?
Both.
Well, I am living in an apartment now. There's not a lot of room.
And my record show that Commissioner is spelled correctly. That's an inside joke. Thank you, Doug. It's been nice working with you.
Appreciate it.
Here's a little protection device.
Okay, I'll take that with me. Well, thank you very much. It was fun to be involved, and thanks to all the people on the staff that made the job easier, and my compatriots on the Planning Commission over the years, some for the whole time almost. It was for the whole time.
It was.
Some do. But it was great, and I enjoyed it. I'll try to find something else that occupies my time in a similar way. Thank you again.
Thank you, Doug. We're now going to item number nine on the agenda, PCN 16036, consideration of and possible action on a tentative map request for a 394 single-family lot subdivision within the Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 planned development villages 37A, B, and 43 on a site totaling 66 acres in an NUD, New Urban Development, excuse me, New Urban District, zoning district, generally located south and east of Kylie Parkway and south of Windmill Farms Road, Sparks, Nevada. Senior Planner Karen Melby presenting.
Good evening. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. As Chairman Camerota states, this is a tentative map for a total of 394 residential units, single-family lots, in the Phase 6 of the Kylie North Plan Development. It is within three villages. Excuse me a second. So here is a vicinity map. It's these three villages here. This would be all of Kylie North. This is Sparks Boulevard, and here's Pyramid Highway. This is part of a tentative map, or this tentative map is part of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Phase 6. The Phase 6 Handbook covers 147 approximate acres located at the northeast corner of Kylie Parkway and Henry Orr Parkway. The final handbook was originally approved by City Council on May 12, 2014. Then on August 8, 2016, the City Council approved an amendment to this handbook to include an additional 38 acres into the planned development, a community park site, open space, and changes to the development standards to comply with a tentative Kylie North Handbook. The applicant is requesting a tentative map for a subdivision consisting of three villages. This site plan shows you the three villages. This would be Village 37 here, Village 37A. Here's 37B, and then 43 is here. In Village 37A, there's 160 units. In Village 37B, there's 125 units proposed. And in Village 43, there's 109 units. The primary access to this property will be, as shown on the tentative map, will be off of, north is this way. Be two years. So this is a different orientation than the other two maps that I've showed you. This would actually be more towards the north here. These are the villages here, and this is Kylie Parkway. This will be the main access. The accesses will be off of, from this roadway into the subdivision. The subdivisions comply with the handbook, and the traffic that will be generated by this project has been looked and is incorporated, or has been included, in the traffic studies for the entire Kylie North project. The Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Master Plan has been adopted as part of the Sparks Master Plan. The subdivision proposed by these applications have proposed densities that are consistent with the master plan land use designations, as demonstrated in the final plan development handbook. This application was distributed to the local reviewing agencies. Washoe County District Health provided comments, and also Nevada Division of Environmental. Both of these letters are attached to my staff report. The developer had estimated the water requirement, excuse me, for the development to be 92.4 acre feet for domestic water use. The water rights will needed to be, needed to serve this project will be dedicated with the final map. That is addressed with condition number four. The developer has estimated the sewer, sewage flows for the development to be 384,150 gallons per day. The applicant will be required to provide evidence that there is adequate sewer capacity as part of, prior to recordation of the final map. That is addressed with condition number nine. The schools that will be, are currently zoned for this area are Hall Elementary School, Shawn Middle School, and Spanish Springs High School. I have attached the letter from the school district to my staff report. The police protection will be through the Sparks Police Department. RTC, or Regional Transportation Commission, has provided their comments, and I've attached that letter to my staff report. Service will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department. At this time, this property site is not located within our six-minute response time for fire service. The city has an agreement with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection for automatic aid to serve this area, so the houses will not require to have fire sprinklers installed. However, the use of the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection Station 17 will require some reimbursement to that fire department from the city of Sparks. Utility companies must sign the final map prior to recordation, acknowledging that they will be serving the final map, the subdivision. It is anticipated that the project will generate 3,763 average daily trips with a PM peak of 398 trips. The traffic impacts from this project have been considered with a review and approval by city staff as part of this tentative map, and also was done as part of the tentative handbook review. This tentative map does not change the traffic patterns or generate average trips exceeding the current capacity identified by in the traffic study for the tentative handbook. The floodplain is, the property is located within FEMA Zone X, and a small portion on the eastern border is actually located in the Zone A. Based on the preliminary hydrology report submitted with the tentative map, this project will not adversely affect the floodplain or other properties downstream. The slope is relatively flat for this property, with most of the property less than 5%. It does not meet, therefore does not meet the threshold requiring the hillside development ordinance. A final geotechnical report will be required prior to the issuance of any building permit, and that is in compliance with condition number eight in my staff, the conditions of approval. Condition 12 on the tentative map requires that the final landscape plans be submitted with the final map and approved prior to the recordation of the final map. Condition number 11 on the tentative requires that the elevations for the homes be approved by the administrator prior to the recordation of the final map. Staff is recommending approval with 13 conditions. Staff is proposing a revised revision to condition number three, which outlines, this is related to the District Health Department, and rather incorporating all of the requested conditions that were in the District Health's letter, we are restricting it to five conditions, which is identified by 3A through 3E, that they must comply with at the final map. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns.
Any questions for?
On this, Karen, I see there's a regional trail links. Is there a regional trail plan already?
Yes. The regional trail comes along here, connecting to the park. This is the park property. And then there's also a regional trail on this eastern boundary. And so at the end of it, there will be links or connections through the subdivision to the regional trail.
And according to condition number 10, are responsible for the improvements in landscaping of that trail?
Not the trail. It would be the...
But the links to it?
Just the links. They have to dedicate the 12 feet, which the trail is actually 10 feet, and then there's a foot on either side of the trail. They have to dedicate that 12 feet for the regional trail.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Karen, you mentioned that the local agreement between Truckee Meadows and the City of Sparks for fire, it would go to Truckee Meadows at the time, that if there, if needed.
Well, it'll go through the dispatch service, and then whoever can get there, and most likely would be from Station 17.
Okay. When in fact, if Station 6 is built, where would it be in regards to this project?
We don't know at this point. We're just starting to explore where that fire station would be. We anticipate, or are thinking that it might be located within the Kylie Ranch North project, but at this point, we don't have any site, and we have not done any site selection, or even an analysis for site selection.
Okay. Thank you.
So along those lines, the presumption and assumption is six-minute or less response time when the firehouse is built?
That's the standard that the city, or the policy for the city, is six-minute response, yes.
And so even though we don't know where that's, our house is to be constructed, we presume and assume that we'll meet that requirement eventually?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be somewhere in Spanish Springs Valley, probably on the western side of the valley. So most likely, we'd put within the six-minute response.
So there's no continuing financial exposure in the event that that doesn't happen? You know, to stay with the fire protection district rather than be within the six-minute response time?
Chairman, I think what Ms. Melby's saying is that while we do not know at this point where the station is going to be, so she cannot guarantee for you tonight that it will be within a six-minute response time to a Sparks fire station. It is presently within a six-minute response time to the Truckee Meadows Service Station. And so to your point as to whether or not there would be an ongoing financial liability for the city, that's kind of the way fire protection works in the valley.
Okay. Thank you.
And so where we have, where we use them for certain things, they use us for certain things. And I don't want to say that it's even necessarily, but it works itself out.
Okay. But it is potentially there?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make sure...
And I know you just went over that. We received, we received an email which was changing item on the conditions, item number three. And so what you did there, I just want to make sure, because I haven't had time to look through all these conditions. You inserted from this letter of August 3 letter and actually put the details in the condition, right?
That's correct.
That's the only change to this whole document, right?
We picked from, I think there's 12 items in their letter?
Yes.
We went through the letter and addressed five of them.
Yes, there are 12 items in the August 3 letter from the District Board of Health. From that list of 12, the conditions that are enumerated here in the revised condition three are conditions 1 through 4 and 6. And the reason for the change is that the District Board of Health stands in the shoes of the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection when they review the final subdivision map. And so the authority of the Board of Health is limited to those things that are under the control of NDEP. The list of conditions that were provided by the district went beyond, in our view, that authority. And so we limited them by taking the five that we thought were appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Melby? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely of Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of KM2 Development and Lewis Management Corp. I think Karen did a great job presenting the project. We're in agreement with all the conditions, including the revision to number three, and here to answer your questions, Mike.
Any questions for the applicant? There being none. This is a, thank you, Mr. Raely. It's a public hearing. So bringing it back to the commissioners for comments, questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to approve the tentative map for Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Villages 37A, 37B, and 43, associated with PCN 16036, adopting findings T1 through T12. And the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval, 1 through 13 is listed in the staff report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, Mr. Rundle. This is a public hearing, item number eight on the agenda. PCN 16037, consideration of and possible action on an application for voluntary annexation into the City of Sparks for two parcels totaling 67.40 acres in size, generally located along the southwest corner of the intersection of Pyramid Lake Highway and Highland Ranch Parkway. Upon annexation, the parcels would convert from a Washoe County designation of GR, General Rural, to a City of Sparks zoning designation of A40 Agriculture.
Mr. Chairman, I request to be excused from this.
Your request is granted. To continue. Welcome, Mr. Rundle. Mr. Rundle presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sparks Planning Commission, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, here today to present the Planning Commission with consideration for a request for contiguous voluntary annexation. Here today to present the planning commission with consideration for a request for contiguous voluntary annexation. As required by the Sparks Municipal Code, staff has identified a number of complex issues for the planning commission to consider with this request. But I believe at the end of the day, it's staff's opinion that this is a fairly simple deduction. And if you refer to your motion on page one of the staff report, staff is recommending denial of this request based on a lack of evidence. So again, a lack of evidence to support the required municipal code findings. Very simply, staff is unable to determine at this time if the piece of land that's requesting annexation can be served by basic municipal services. The request from American Recess LLC is for two parcels totaling approximately 67 acres. It's generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of the Pyramid Lake Highway and Highland Ranch Parkway. Vicinity map is on the monitors above. Is any of the planning commission need me to zoom in on that location? Continuing on, the site was, the site was brought into the city of Sparks' sphere of influence in 2002 along with 2,400 additional acres, primarily to the south of the site for consideration today. In 2007, an additional 1,200 acres was added to the sphere of influence on that side of the valley. And that primarily included the Highland Ranch, or excuse me, the Sonoma Highlands Plan Development, which is at the north and in the gray and has been previously annexed. In 2008, through a robust planning, master planning effort, the city of Sparks and the city of planning commission ultimately approved the West Pyramid Plan. And that's on page 12 of your staff report. Typically, a request for annexation comes with a desire to develop and receive municipal services and facilities at higher adopted service levels. In 2004, the city of Sparks Planning Commission and City Council adopted a master plan resolution to identify that prior to intensification of a site, that a site shall be required to obtain municipal service level. And that's on page 13 and 14 of your staff report. I don't have that as an attachment, sorry. Resolution 2941 is not just a historic, because now it's over 12 years old historic policy, but it's actually a historic practice. City staff in the city of Sparks have not annexed property without the availability to sewer capacity. As development rights have been approved in the city of Sparks, including Stonebrook, Sonoma Highlands, Pioneer Meadows, and Kylie Ranch, the city has identified that there, excuse me, with those developments that have been approved, there is a substantial amount of unbuilt, but approved, commercial and residential in those handbooks, again Pioneer Meadows, Kylie Ranch, and Stonebrook. So it is imperative for the city of Sparks to identify that all of that development that has been approved that has not been built will be able to receive the basic municipal services they would expect when being in the city of Sparks. To ensure that there's adequate sewer capacity for those approved and unbuilt projects, the city of Sparks contracted and was approved to do a sewer study that is now being analyzed by staff. At the time that this staff report was created or written, the staff estimated that two additional months would be required for analysis of that report that has now been given to the city. Through this report, the city anticipates or has identified three possible outcomes that were listed in your staff report. One of them is that there is not enough sewer capacity to supply to the approved and unbuilt projects that we just, that I just listed. That would lead to a scenario where the city of Sparks would have to identify a capital improvement plan of how to upsize the current facilities to accommodate the, the previously approved and unbuilt projects. A second possibility would be that their remaining capacity in the sewer lines is equal to what is approved and unbuilt. And the third possibility that we see is that there is excess capacity in the lines and the city planning commission and the city council would be, would have a policy decision on how to allocate that excess capacity. But until this analysis is, is complete, staff is unable to determine whether or not there's adequate capacity to, to allocate to any additional land in the city of Sparks, including this parcel if it were to be annexed. Unlike sewer capacity, staff is currently able to determine that this site is outside of the adopted level of service for fire, which was just talked about in the last application of six-minute response time. And this map we have for you to consider, it's also in your staff report as page 15. This is, this is zoomed out and over the entire city. And as we zoom into the respective site today, we'll see that it's outside the fire response time of, it's in the red or in the uncolored area. And it's outside of the response time of Station 5 or 4 in the city of Sparks. And it's outside the, its adopted six-minute response time for Station. I think it's 17 on La Posada, which is the Truckee Meadows Fire Station. At the study session, it was requested by Commissioner Vanderwall to identify when the city of Sparks formally adopted the six-minute response time. And Fire Chief Maples, Fire Chief City of Sparks, did provide me an email that identified Sparks adopted the six-minute response time into Title 14 of the Sparks Municipal Code when they adopted, when the city of Sparks City Council adopted the 2012 International Fire Code. Policy 3.5.1 of the, of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan states, "To be in conformance with the regional plan, affected entities must ensure that necessary public facilities and services to support new development are or will be available at adequate and based on adopted service levels at the time the development occurs." Policy 3.5.3.2 of the regional plan further states that areas inside the TMSA that do not have development constraints shall not be given a more intense designation unless all applicable services and facilities have been found in conformance with the regional plan. Because this, because this is an annexation, the city does not have the ability to conditionally approve the request. This is important for the planning commission to consider as the annexation will take in a, if not all, a portion of Highland Ranch Parkway. The city will be responsible for maintaining Highland Ranch Parkway. Those, those, those responsibilities will include not just maintenance of the road, but snow removal or snow service at, on the road as well. Of course, services, city services don't end at those. They include fire service, police service, code enforcement services, and any other applicable services, including potentially storm drain mitigation. While the fiscal analysis that was included with the application and the executive summary was sent to the planning commission identifies that there is a positive outcome for the city of Sparks if, if this land were to be annexed. It is predicated on an analysis that simply doesn't exist. The city cannot identify whether or not sewer service can be provided for the commercial project that's listed in the fiscal analysis and the multifamily density that's listed in the analysis. The risk and responsibility the city takes on by annexing the land is significant because of the obligation to provide service. Without the ability to identify that the land is indeed developable to the densities listed in the fiscal analysis, it, it is, it would be inappropriate to annex this land at this time. If the sewer capacity is not there, the fiscal analysis fails to portray the correct picture as it will be impossible to provide that density or an intensity based on the lack of the ability to identify whether that capacity can be provided for. Finding A1 regarding this project is met and the staff does identify that this property is contiguous with the city of, with current city of Sparks and is a voluntary request and has been signed by all of the property owners. That, 100% of the property owners have requested it. Finding A2 identifies numerous findings for the planning commission to consider, including but not limited to, is this a logical extension of the city limits? Staff is making the assertion that this annexation is illogical at this time because it cannot be identified that basic municipal services could be provided at the site at this time. The same finding, finding A2, also includes consideration for proximity to water service. The applicant has demonstrated that there is a water main within proximity to the site. And I'll put that on the monitor. This is also included as page 16 of your staff report. This here is identifying approximate location of an existing water main. And that would be in, in Highland Ranch Parkway or within the Ridgeway. Lastly, in regard to finding A2, it must be considered that the annexation is needed to accommodate planned regional growth. At this time, staff has insufficient data to make this finding as there is insufficient data to determine if there is enough infrastructure to support the previously approved but unbuilt projects that are in the city of Sparks. Staff has laid out a case for the planning commission to consider based on one premise. It is premature to recommend approval of an annexation when we don't know if we can provide the basic municipal services to the site upon which an annexation would be the city of Sparks' responsibility. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rundle?
Mr. Rundle, I had, during our study session, had requested just a ballpark of what it would cost the city to take over Highland Ranch Parkway as far as maintenance and bringing it up to code?
Yes, Mr. Martini has-
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner John Martini, Community Services Director.
Commissioner Vanderwell, to, to answer your question, I drew numbers from their, the financial impact statement that was included with this application. I, I think the consultant who did, did a very nice job of taking the numbers provided by your community services department for what it typically costs to maintain our roads. So over the 20-year analysis period, cost for slurry sealing, slurry sealing the road, providing a three-inch overlay, sewer cleaning costs, catch basins that would need to be put in, street sweeping costs, restriping the roads, over that 20-year period, that cost is estimated at $558,893. In this analysis, we, we typically include in that 20-year period the cost to actually rebuild the road. And somewhere between 20 and 30 years, the road's going to be worn out. The consultant chose not to include a re, a full rehab cost because it's the end of the 20-year period. So I estimated that cost at an additional half a million dollars. So the consultant did their job. I don't disagree with what they did. But in my opinion, over 20 years, it's about a million bucks to maintain that piece of Highland Ranch Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Five in the initial, 20 and five in the projected after 20, huh?
Typical maintenance in that first 20 years at half a million, $558,000. We would have a rehab, a full rehab of that road right around 20 years typically. Please bear in mind that Highland Ranch Parkway has been there for a while now. It's beyond kind of the scope of where we are here tonight to go out and do an analysis of the, mostly a county road. We do have a little bit right at the intersection of Pyramid Highway. So that road's got some life on it right now.
So we're into the first 20 years?
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so during the 20 years, as development happens and things like that, so I can understand, if there are development agreements, do the developers then take on part of the share or any share of helping keep up the roads, maintain the roads, and improve the roads?
Not directly. Let me answer that question a little more explicitly. So let's make an assumption tonight that maybe not this week, but down the road, this property gets annexed, we go through a rezone, probably in line with what Mr. Hamilton's asking for. As we come back to you with a rezone, when we have an idea of what this project is, there are likely some upgrades that need to be done at the intersection. I have some concerns over, over storm drain runoff, curbs and gutters, potentially sidewalks. At that point, we can consider nexus and proportionality for what we ask the developer to give to that road. But to tell the developer they've got to rehab the whole thing, in my opinion, is a stretch because that road is used by a lot of folks, particularly our neighbors in Sun Valley. It's in access to Pyramid Highway. So there's always a proportionality element. Now, elements that need to be added to the road that are directly a cause of a future development are certainly mitigations we can ask for. The intersection may need to be upgraded to provide turning movements. We don't know, but we'll, we'll know at the time of rehab. So I hope that answers your question a little better.
Okay, I just, I, because as development happens, I know you guys enter into development agreements and things like that. So I just want to make sure that, like you are stating, that if roads need to be changed or anything else, that developers will either help, share, or whatever in, whatever needs to be maintained or fixed.
Maintenance, in my 17 years, I, 17 years here, I can't think of a time when we entered to, into an agreement, a direct development agreement. Nor in the course of a conditional approval of projects have we asked for a developer to enter into maintenance obligations with us.
Okay.
However, capital improvements on the front end, very often.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martini. Any other questions for staff? There being none, would the applicant like to come forward, please? State your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get to my PowerPoint, if you don't mind. Perfect. Hello, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Armando, Doug, thank you for the time. Appreciate you allowing me to be here. Appreciate you letting me give you a little, a little different picture than I think you just had heard. Certainly respect staff, just agree to disagree on this one, which can certainly happen. I'm here on behalf of the applicant led up by Mr. Steve Hamilton, who has owned Hamilton Homes, Hamilton Solar, great developer, great community partner of Sparks for a long, long time. He's here in the audience to answer any questions. Along with him is Jason Gillis, from tech engineering to answer any technical engineering questions. And again, for the record, my name's Garrett Gordon, tonight representing the applicant. So the property. This isn't a 67-acre project. If you can see here with the topography, it's a 20-acre project. So it certainly is a lot smaller than is kind of portrayed when you look at the number 67 popping around. Slopes are steep. There's certainly only two, maybe three pads there you can see in the orange that really are developable, and that's what we're talking about, that could potentially be developable in the future. You also see here that these two parcels are in the sphere of influence. And I'm going to touch on that for a couple slides because it's very, very important. You can see here with the grid, that's designated not only as a sphere of influence, but general commercial. So this property currently sits in Washoe County. And it is in Sparks' sphere of influence, which I'll go through of what significance that has, which is very significant. But also, it's been given, and I say given, not only by this body, but by Regional Planning, had to approve it, 14 acres of general commercial was designated on this property. So you have a property owner ready to take advantage of that designation that was put on his property. What is a sphere of influence? Definition in code is means an area in the which city plans to expand as designated in the comprehensive regional plan. You heard Mr. Rundle reference that this property does not mean certain regional plan findings. I would submit to you, those findings have already been met. And/or, if, this is not the Regional Planning Commission. You guys don't have the regional plan in front of you. You guys aren't responsible for determining whether a project is in conformance with the regional plan. That's already been done. And how? And how? The Sparks sphere of influence and these two parcels within them, and 14 acres of commercial, have already been approved by regional planning. NRS 278 says, "The contents of the regional plan, number six, includes annexation, spheres of influence of each unit of local government." How is sphere of influence defined? An area in the which a political subdivision may expand in the foreseeable future. So this, this two properties, 14 acres of commercial, the findings had to already be made to be part of the regional plan. Now, number two, if a city has a sphere of influence that is designated in the comprehensive regional plan, these two properties, the city shall adopt a master plan concerning the territory within the sphere of influence. And that determination of that adoption was 14 acres of general commercial, which is not arbitrary, which comes with it facilities, service considerations, many considerations of why you would put 14 acres on a particular piece of property. So on the bottom here, I say since this property and the sphere is already in the regional plan, and in the city's master plan, it automatically is conforming with the regional plan. So the policies I were mentioning about to you earlier have already been deemed in conformance, and it's not this body's, I would submit to you, this body's job to say, does it conform to the regional plan? This body looks at Sparks Municipal Code and Sparks Plans. So again, what does this mean? Number one is, regional planning and the Sparks City Council have already approved this property for a sphere of influence designation, including with conformance with regional plan policies. We never could have gotten the sphere unless we made it through the regional plan policies. Number two, regional planning and Sparks City Council already approved the property for 14 acres of general commercial in the city of Sparks' master plan. It's the overlay of the sphere of influence will be designated master plan. So if you do approve this tonight, and City Council does as well, it will come in at 14 acres of master plan general commercial, which that conversation has happened. I submit to you, this is more of a formality of the annexation rather than the big discussion of what properties, what sphere of influence does the city of Sparks want, and frankly, what zoning should go with it. And finally, annexations don't go to regional planning. So this body, this city of Sparks, can approve this annexation without regional plan. What does that mean? I would submit to you that the findings that Mr. Rundle mentioned about regional plan policies have either already been made or are not applicable, given it's not this body's job to review the regional plan and review the annexation and how it complies or doesn't comply. That's for the regional planning commission. It would only go back if we requested an expansion of the 14 acres. So if this is approved, it comes in at 14 acres, if we ever wanted to go up to the 20, which is developable, back to the master, back to regional, and we would have to meet all those findings, services, facility plans, et cetera. But not the rezoning, not any use permits, and not an annexation, doesn't go to regional because, and in the process of annexations, it's already been seen as in the sphere of influence and comply with regional. Fire response. I know this is important, very, very, very important. Pulling from the staff report, and again, I'm going to refer to their finding from the regional plan, I'm not acknowledging that we should comply with it, but I'm trying to do my job and be as comprehensive as possible in the event you believe that we should comply with regional plan policies still, says to be in conformance with the regional plan, master plans, facility plans, and other similar plans of local government and affected entities is important, must ensure that necessary public facilities and services to support new development are or will be available and adequate based on adopted level of services at the time the impacts of the new development occur. I think a great example is the Kylie Ranch tentative map we just heard. You guys are still talking about fire service, which was important. Is it within or without the six minutes? If it's without, is there a mutual aid agreement? If it's without, are there sprinklers required? Should there be an annexation in the fire assessment district? That all comes at the time of development, the tentative map stage. We are tentative map, rezoning, use permit, rezoning, master plan, annexation. I would submit to you, we are not even close to the time the new development is going to occur. We're very, very far away. So again, what does this mean, assuming the finding applies, given the 14 acres of general commercial have already been deemed in conformance with the regional plan? At the time the development occurs, which is not the time of annexation, the services for new development, which is not the time of annexation, must be adequate based on adopted levels of service. So potentially, levels of service change from annexation, maybe in six months when we do the master plan, that's changed, maybe the special use permit, maybe at the end of it, maybe at the time of building permit. We have to comply, and we will, and we will acknowledge on the record, probably a development agreement will in fact be needed. This probably is not getting rezoned unless we have a fire plan put in place, but that's the appropriate time. Sewer, obviously very, very important sewer service. As you heard Mr. Rundle reference, the policy resolution goal SS1, let me just read that so it was clear what he referenced. "All sanitary sewer service for new development, new development shall conform to the Washoe County District Health Department requirements." And then here's kind of the zinger that was used. And be, and be connected, says be, it should say, it's, I guess it's, it's not, missing a word in the resolution, but I'm assuming it's, and be connected to a sanitary sewer system. We 100% agree it should be connected to a sanitary sewer system, and in fact, it will. And I'm not, not only because of this goal, but you have law, Sparks law on the books, chapter 13.04, raw land development, which is what we're talking about. "In order to provide for the orderly development of sanitary sewer lines and storm drain facilities throughout the city limits, it is declared to be a policy of the city to provide for extensions of existing sanitary sewer lines and storm drain lines to serve those areas of the city which are in the planning stages of development." Here we are. "In such a manner as to allow the cost of such extensions to be paid out of funds readily available to the city," and this is important, "and to be charged against the recorded owner of the land being developed on a pro rata basis to final acceptance of such development by the proper officials of the city. Moreover, and here's the procedures, prior to that connection, any such land developer, subdivider, or property owner within the area, within the area to be served by any such extension shall enter into a written agreement with the city to pay our share of the cost of sewer. Finally, in the case of new development, prior to the approval of a final subdivision map or issuance of a building permit, this has to take place." And finally, I think this is the most important to show, by no means whatsoever do we believe we're entitled to sewer service of this annex today. It is completely the risk of the developer and the property owner that there's not, that there's, that there's quantity, and also it's, it's, it is fiscally responsible to and works for the project to pay for the extension. So the last sentence is, "Nothing contained herein shall require the city council to approve or the city to share in any of the costs of any such extensions to any area within the city." So I would say you guys are pretty covered with sewer, in my opinion. Number one, in raw land, which this is, we have to pay for it ourselves. Number two, you can hold up a subdivision map, but more importantly, a building permit. We can't go pull a building permit unless we have paid our fair share of sewer. And three, the city can never, ever, ever be on the hook. So I would say you, there is no liability to the city, there is no gotcha, we're in your city limits now, we get sewer, we have to comply with this, and we can't pull a building permit without it. So just because we have an uncertainty on the sewer study right now, you have a backstop here to hold our feet to the fire. Important question came up of why now at the caucus meeting, and I thought it was important to put a slide together for it. Why now? And Mr. Rundle had mentioned, you know, there's a study pending, maybe we can have this delayed. And I would say, and certainly respect his opinion very much so, but number one, and this was in our fiscal report, the need for apartment product in Reno-Sparks region has been widely documented. Vacancy rates reached 2.3% in the first quarter, and this is interesting, this particular zip code, 80% of the employees live outside of the area due to the lack of residential mixed offer in this region. So you have a property owner and a developer saying, we see a market here, there's growth happening, we need to move forward, and you know, Hamilton has a very, very good job, and build a great project that Sparks can be proud of. Number two, why now is the timing. We postponed our submittal for at least two, for two, for two months to wait for the results of the sewer study, and the consultant, I'm sure, is very, very busy, like all of us right now, city staff is very, very busy, they just got the results, and staff indicated in the staff report, it'd be another two months until they were able to get through it. There's no guarantee they won't go back to the sewer consultant to figure it out. So this is step one, the annexation. We're not guaranteed anything. We still have a rezoning to do, which would come before this body, you hold our feet to the fire, of fire, of sewer, fire, et cetera. A potential master plan amendment if we go from the 14 acres to the 20, special use permits, value map, value, parcel map, fire line adjustment, and you just heard a tentative map, that's where the rubber hits the road with respect to the details. Delay of the sewer study results shouldn't create a moratorium on voluntary annexations. This is voluntary. We're not demanding any services, we're not being brought in right now, and we're acknowledging that no cer, that there was no certainty for future approvals, and I know we can't have conditions in the annexation ordinance, but maybe there's a statement we'd be willing to acknowledge, that the applicant acknowledges that there is no certainty for future approvals until, until, you know, capacity can be confirmed. That's already in law, but if you want to put it, I would respectfully ask for your vote tonight, and put that in the ordinance as more of a statement, that I, that we would certainly appreciate or, and consent to that. Finally, fiscal responsible, fiscal responsible annexation. So there was two scenarios, and hopefully it wasn't too confusing, but the, I guess if you're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't with fiscal analysis, but our thought was this, we wanted to be as transparent as possible of what our end project was going to look like. So no one could ever say, well, maybe it pencils today at a 40, but is it going to pencil at your future development? You know, you're pulling the wool over our eyes, or making us look at this in the vacuum. So scenario two is extrapolates out 200 apartments, and the number of commercial, including mini storage, and it, as the staff report clearly indicates, hundreds of thousands of dollars in the black. Also, scenario one is, just if you approve this today, and it becomes 14 acres of commercial, what happens? We just developed commercial, no, no future entitlements, as all happens, it also pencils. Let me touch on the road issue for a second, in that the statute is here about the roads, that if you, if you annex in a piece of property, the abutting road comes with it. But it, but this includes subdivisions. If the annexed territory is a subdivision, the portions of the county roads which provide the primary axis of the subdivision are also annexed and become streets. So any development, may it be Wingfield, may it be Kylie, may it be DeAndrea, this is typical. In comes the development, in comes the road. And we know that we have improvements to make, and the costs that were shared to you and Mr. Martini through the report includes build-out, includes what it costs to mitigate the construction that we're building. So we're going to be responsible for the, for the upgrades, and as you saw on the report, either if we just stick with the 14 acres commercial with no additional multifamily or use permits, it's still pencils, both scenarios, pencils. And finally, I think this is most important, I wanted to just certainly be fair and address each of the concerns in the staff report, but I know findings are critical here, right? We're talking about findings of an annexation. There's two sets of findings. One is an annexation program, and one is a voluntary annexation. The annexation program under NRS 268652, and just, I'll refresh your memory on that citation, next slide, this is important, but 268652, program of annexation, before adopting of annexation pursuant to subsection 1, the city must hold one or more public meetings. At the public hearing, the city shall consider, and there are the findings that staff talked, mentioned you couldn't be found. Those aren't applicable to voluntary annexations. In the same statute, annexation of contiguous territory by city or upon petition of all owners, alternative procedures. As an alternative to procedures for initiation of annexation proceeding set forth in 268610 to 668, which here was 625, so we're within that range, the governing body of the city may, after notifying the board commissioners, annex 1, contiguous, contiguous territory owned and fee-bought to city. And 2, contiguous territory of 100% of the owners, which is the case here, petition to come in and they're contiguous. So this situation is treated just like if the city was annexing contiguous territory or property owned by the city. So the city wouldn't have to go through all these findings. So those findings are applicable for a program of annexation if you're bringing properties in that may not want to come in. Now you have to show it's sewer, now you have to show there's a regional plan, now you have to show all of this. We're sitting here going, we're in the sphere of influence, we have 14 acres of commercial, we have a lot of steps to go, but we would like to come into the city of Sparks and believe we can meet, not only can we meet the findings, but technically, under this voluntary annexation, we don't have to meet the findings. So I'd respectfully tonight ask that you have property owner, you have a developer, they're in the sphere, 14 acres, we have solutions to, and sewer and fire are questions for another day, and the findings, which is very, very important from a legal perspective, those findings A through G are just not applicable to this. We're voluntary, we're allowed to come in, just like if the city annex its own property. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions, to not go too long, but respectfully ask that you approve this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, questions? Yeah. Mr. Garrett, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Lee.
First of all, I want to kind of go backward. The city council approved the contract for the sewer study March of 2015. The consultant submitted a draft to city staff for review and analysis, anticipating time is two months. My question to you, and you already brought it up, is why can't you wait? I mean, you talk about, you talked about there, about the vacancy rate and the timing, so on and so forth. Now, that's for the, for the multifamily. Then you brought up, the regional planning commission, which I'm on, have been on nine years, had already approved the 14 acres. I don't remember this little 14 acres approving it, as being on the regional planning commission. I mean, we approved lots of them. Now, we're talking about annexing 67.40 acres, and you keep bringing up 14. Why is that? You're wanting to annex 67 acres, but yet you keep bringing up the 14 acres. And I think there's a lot of people on this commission that are a little bit confused on what you're stating there. So would you kind of clarify that?
Sure, thanks. I mean, I know there was a number of questions there, let me try to hit them. If I missed one, let me know. So let me hit, with you being on regional, which I've been before you, and you've always had a great job there. So you're correct that you haven't seen an application for a master plan designation of 14 acres on this property. That'd be by itself an application because it's not in the city of Sparks yet. What did come before you was, and it was a Sparks master plan. And then that Sparks master plan embedded in it, I don't know the minutes, I don't know if it was discussed or not, but in that plan is
The sphere of influence.
Identifying these two properties as a sphere of influence.
True, I agree with you there.
And further within that Sparks master plan is an overlay of the sphere of designating 14 acres on this property. So if it was annexed in, the city and conceivably regional determine that if this was annexed in, that 14 acres of commercial would be appropriate on this property.
Why would regional planning submit the 14 acres and not the whole 67 as part of the sphere of influence? So you're saying the 14 acres is part of the sphere influence, which it is, but what about the other 40 some acres?
Because, thank you for the question, Mr. Lee, because if you look at this map here, I think a determination was made about the developability of the property. You can see two parcels in the sphere, this is all undevelopable, there's a little, there's a mining quarry back here, but all undevelopable. You can see here that the 14 acres is a blob, but it certainly encompasses, as you can see, the develop, the developability of the property and the adjacency to the public infrastructure. So I think they, because it's a Sparks master plan, they have to acknowledge slope ordinances in Sparks, so looked at that in conjunction with what's buildable, what's not compared to the slopes.
I have no further questions at this time.
So is, may I ask, is 60, are 67 in the sphere of influence, or the 14 that you designate?
So to be clear, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the question, so, sorry if I was unclear. So the staff report indicates, and I agree, that both parcels, there's one smaller one here, and there's the larger one here, are both within the Sparks sphere of influence. What was also designated on these two parcels was 14 acres of general commercial master plan designation under the city.
plan designation under the city of Sparks. So, I don't know any other way to describe it than it's like a floating entitlement, that there was a discussion of if this property came in, what should it come in as? Do we need more commercial? And if so, where would it go? And it was logical, I believe, to say at the intersection of Sparks Boulevard, Highland Ranch Parkway, and Pyramid, that 14 acres of, that this property should be in the sphere, which is defined as where the city plans to expand. And within that, there was a predetermination of what the land use should be. And I don't think it was arbitrary. I think it was, you know, this is a good place to put commercial, and that's why the property owner is following up with that determination today.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon, back on the question, Mr. Lean's question regarding regional planning. Reading through this, was the property, would the property have been included in the West Pyramid plan that would have gone before regional planning? That in our staff report, it states that there were joint meetings between Washoe County, the city of Sparks, and then the plan was presented to regional planning for approval. It would have been on page three of our staff report?
Yeah, Commissioner Van Nieuwen, through you, Mr. Chairman, with the question, Van Nieuwen, it is a, that is a great point, that I don't think this determination, or I know and evidence by the staff report, was not made in a vacuum, that there was, looks like numerous meetings for Washoe County and Sparks, which would make sense, it's Washoe's property, Sparks is asking what should be in the sphere, city council workshops, CAB meetings, Washoe County Planning Commission, Sparks Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission, ultimately back to the city council, Sparks City Council for certification. So, this went through a long public process of should it be in the sphere, and what designation should it get? Should it get once the city plans to expand as designated in the comprehensive regional plan? And of course, master plans are part of the regional plan, or have to be in conform to the regional plan. So, this was all done at the same time.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicants?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gordon, piggybacking on Commissioner Lean's comment, you've said numerous times that, you know, this is a long process. You know, to get annexed is the first part of that process. You know, vacancies rates are at a low, you know, we've been reading about that. Two months in that process seems to be a blink of an eye. So, just another, why cannot we wait till that, you know, if we're going to offer municipal services to this thing, this very important piece of the puzzle is the sewer capacity. And what's, and why that two-month window, and it's going back to why now, and I've asked that now three times, and I just don't think I've gotten an answer yet, of why can this not wait two months till that report is back?
For the record, because two months continues to be two months, to be blunt with you, Mr. Pughens, in that, I mean, this client approached me three months ago and said, "Let's go, let's file." And we talked about it, and the sewer report wasn't ready. And then a part of it came back, but then there was problems with it, so I went back to the consultant. Another month went by, and we wanted to submit, and we waited. Then we submitted. And then my understanding was that the last time I was told about the sewer report, it wasn't two months, it was at the end of the year. So, now it's maybe two months. So, I think it's tough, because everyone's really busy right now, right? I mean, it's, thank God, we're in, as I've heard many council members of Sparks say, Sparks is open for business, you know, we want your business, let's go, we're all busy. I'm really busy in Sparks, this is great. But there's no guarantee that, at the end of the day, that that sewer report is going to be ready. We could be stuck till the end of the year, or beginning of next year. And I think, given this chapter I put up, you have a backstop. We're not, there's no legal requirement to provide a sewer if we're annexed in. And this requires us to pay for it, that the city will not be on the hook for any of it, and we have to deal with a building permit. And I would say that tentative map that you just discussed, I mean, that's where the nuts and bolts of how much sewer, what's the capacity, who's going to pay for it, is that point in time. So, I think it's a legitimate concern about timing, given the other steps we have to take, the market, and the uncertainty of waiting on a third party, which I don't think any of us in any of our professions really likes to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for the applicants?
I guess, Commissioner Camerota and members of the planning commission, maybe since we're a little over an hour into this, maybe we could have a 10-minute recess, and we can, you know, reconvene and then move forward with the discussion and
Any concern from the applicant for that?
I guess there's two from Ali's. One, before I get, I just want to make sure my PowerPoint is incorporated in the record tonight, just so that was clear. Two, yeah, I guess we can take a break, and everyone can go check to make sure my facts are accurate, but I would just request some rebuttal time, if possible, after staff or anyone responds to my comment, if that's fair.
My question to you is, has the applicant stated all its stated goals?
Yep.
Or are we breaking you in place? Do you want to, are we losing some momentum by doing that?
Appreciate the sensitivity to that, but no, my presentation is complete. Thank you.
In that case, I'd like to call for a recess at 10 minutes after 7:00, with a return date of, return time of 20 minutes after 7:00. We convene the city Sparks Planning Commission meeting Thursday, September 15th, 2016. The applicant just appeared. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open up that portion and ask for anyone in the public who wants to come forward. Or I'd like to open a public hearing. There being none, I'll close the public hearing. Like to bring this hearing item back to the dais and bring staff back for some questions, Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, one right now. Mr. Rundell, you, in your presentation, referred to approved and unbuilt and everything else. We all know with, of course, the crash and everything else, that we did a lot of approved and unbuilt subdivisions. So, I guess what my question is, is of the approved and unbuilt, how many have moved to tentative map, like our previous project that was on our agenda?
I don't know that I can answer that. There has not been any tentative maps in Stone Brook. There has There are.
There are, actually.
So, not on the current side, I wouldn't be. I can't answer those.
I want to make a distinction to the planning commission. You've heard the word tentative map mentioned tonight. Tensive maps only go with residential land.
So, planning commission, please remember, we master plan, we go through zoning procedures. The next step for land that is going to be subdivided for single-family homes, condominiums, goes through the tentative map process and the final map process. What's before you tonight, what the applicant has told you their dream, what they'd like this to be, will not have a tentative map unless they get a condominium project in the 200-unit multi. It's parcel map. So that procedure will be, we're here tonight discussing the annexation at some point if they want more than 14 acres of commercial, which is in the master plan, and don't forget, if it is annexed or when it is annexed, it will come over with R-40. Jim, am I correct?
A.
A-40, which there will have to be a rezone just to get to the commercial that's in the master plan. There won't likely be a tentative map unless Mr. Hamilton chooses to do condominiums under condominium mapping law. So those steps are in place. Now, Commissioner VanderWaal, to get to your question. Activity in Northeast Sparks. We do have a tentative map two years ago on the Stone Brook project. They brought that tentative map back to life. We've got a tentative map in Pioneer Meadows for about 140 units that's coming to you guys soon. You saw the Kylie tentative map. That's kind of it.
All right. Dan, since, okay, then let me, excuse me, Mr. Chair, let me reframe my question then. Okay, since this is not, this would not be considered a single-family residence as far as tentative map. As far as commercial, or so that would be multifamily and things like that, I realize that we have approved a lot. And the thing is, is I know this from the business that I'm in, that unless you've got the money, you don't get to move forward. So I guess what my question is, is we're approving all of these and we're saying, okay, well, we have these approved unbuilt, okay? We don't know, because we don't have crystal balls, okay, how fast are they going to come through? So I guess what I'm asking is, do we have a backlog that could suck up sewer capacity if we don't annex, if we don't annex this voluntary annexation?
I think that's the point that we tried to make in our staff report. We don't know.
Okay.
To your point, multifamily projects in Northeast Sparks that have been approved but not built are guaranteed sewer capacity today.
Okay. Perfect. Then that was my backup question. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, Chairman, one question. The applicant said that they usually pay their fair share when it deals with the sewer. What is, what would that entitle, their fair share? And is that a, or is that just a shot in the dark?
Commissioner Funes, if you would allow me to go grab the code book that Mr. Thornley has, I'd like to discuss that with you. Mr. Thornley, I'm an engineer, but could you show me how to pull this page out of this contraption you have? Can you, can you take that page out for me, please?
Those appear on my desk as everybody matches.
The question is, will the lawyers go back together now?
I am confident that Mr. Smith has the technical know-how to do that.
So, the applicant tonight brought forth a piece of our code in Title 13 and discussed how we are protected by this code, and I don't disagree with him, however, some points I'd like to make. First off, the code, Title 13, only works for land that's incorporated in the City of Sparks. Has to be annexed. Number two, let's read the section in its entirety. So I'm reading from 1304.020A. "When it is deemed necessary," please remember that portion, "to provide an extension of existing sanitary sewer lines or existing storm rain lines to serve a contemplated subdivision or other development in the city, the Public Works Department," nowadays that would be your Community Services Department, "shall prepare a detailed plan, an estimate of construction costs, engineering costs, right-of-way acquisition costs, and all other incidental costs connected with any such extension, and shall determine the area that may be served by such extension." Planning Commission, I apologize if this has taken a long time. This is a big undertaking. That is exactly what this report is trying to do for us. This report will help us determine all those elements that are in our code so that we can understand what we need to build, when it needs to be built, what it will cost, and sewers are very expensive, timing for when it could be built, and as Mr. Gordon pointed out, proportional cost to future development. As I sit today, if something needs to be done to any of the lines that connect to the Northeast Interceptor that would go to this property, to upgrade them to accommodate this growth, I cannot identify to you what that proportional share is. That is the reason we're, our last sewer model was in 2005. Some things happened between 2005 and 2016. Technology has changed. Commissioner Lean, you've watched a lot of projects come forward on that old sewer model. We are in the process, just like we're doing with the comp plan, of updating what we know.
But with that, if they were annexed in the City of Sparks, this developer would pay their share, their fair share of that plant?
To extend the sewer lines, yes.
To extend the sewer lines.
Commissioner Funes, I don't know how long, if they did need to extend the line, how long they need to extend it. Is it from the property all the way to the treatment plant? I don't know. But in a few months, we'll know.
Clarify that, to, from the property that they're at to the plant by the river. Is that what you're saying? You don't know that, but it could. It could.
We don't know the extent of what future investment needs to be made in our sanitary sewer system to accommodate the sphere. Everything might be fine. It might be hookup tomorrow. It might be, here's a minor upgrade we need to do to a short portion of the line. Here's your proportional share, Mr. Developer, let's enter into an agreement and get it done. Please also remember that this area is part of Impact Deservice Area Number One. So that things get very complicated as to proportional share. But until we have base data from this report, it's hard to identify.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, could I make a couple of points?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It was, was pointed out, or brought up in the applicant's presentation, a couple of things that I'd like to give you staff's perspective on. Long form of annexation versus a short form of annexation. A long-form annexation require the city to identify economical and efficient provision of services. Long-form annexation also require going to regional planning. Regional Planning Commission acting as the annexation commission, I believe. Sparks has adopted the short-form annexation. That's why it goes to Sparks Planning Commission and Sparks City Council. With that short-form annexation, we have adopted findings that you must make, so they are required findings that you must make. Those findings are listed in 2005 of the municipal code, which was pointed out in the staff report. So to state that the findings are inapplicable is, in staff's opinion, incorrect. The next thing I want to talk about is this area in the sphere of influence. Commissioner Lean, you may remember, and I can't remember the timing, but I'm going to throw out two words that will resonate with many people. Commissioner VanderWaal, you may remember from a different career as a planning commissioner, settlement agreement. The judge did require the three jurisdictions, Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County, to put areas in their sphere of influence, whether they wanted them or not. It was divided up and they were put in the spheres of influence. And then we, the cities and the county were required to exert extraterritorial jurisdiction, whether you wanted it or not. So areas were put into the sphere of influence by the settlement agreement that became the 2007 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Lastly, what, or two more things. Roads, it was brought up that the city annexes roads all the time with development. That is not entirely correct. For example, when Sparks annexed Wingfield Springs, there were no roads going out there. The developer was required to put in the road and dedicate it back to the city. foothills at Wingfield, developer put in the roads, dedicated them to the city. Pioneer Meadows, Stone Brook will be the same way. The one example of an existing road that Sparks did have to annex was La Pasada, and that was with the Cimarron development because it was determined after they paid for all of their right-of-way improvements that their primary access would probably be La Pasada. So Sparks did annex La Pasada and now currently maintains La Pasada. Was there a sect, Spanish, portions of Spanish Springs Road was also existing. I believe Spanish Springs Road was the road that formerly was the Pyramid Highway that got people from Reno and Sparks from the early 1900s toward Pyramid. And so that road kind of was, portions of it were annexed into the city. Last point that I wanted to make was, the planning commission has the responsibility of identifying, is this annexation in the best interest of the City of Sparks or in the best interest of the applicant? And those are the, those are the things, Mr. Chair, that I wanted to clarify from the points that were made by the applicant.
Mr. Rundell, I have a question. The applicant parsed the distinction between the annexation program and the voluntary annexation. Could you please speak to that?
The annexation program is more so applicable when the City of Sparks or City of Reno, in this case, would do forced annexation. So the City Planning Commission and the City Council would identify through a workshop format, and ultimately an approval of a document, where the city believes that certain areas are, maybe they're islands within the City of Sparks, and they're receiving municipal services, and the planning commission and council deem that those areas should be annexed. So there exists typically existing developments, the city says, you're receiving our services, we're going to force you to annex. So the, so the property owner does not come to the city with a request to be annexed, and that's where they have to be identified in a program of annexation. And those last for seven years. The program annexation does not apply when you do a voluntary contiguous annexation. That's where you would follow the findings in Chapter 2005 that the City Planning Commission adopted even more recently in 2015 with the adoption of the new municipal code. But they were also in the municipal code from 1976.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of completeness, we talk about annexations and we say that there are two types of annexation, the long form and the short form, but there are technically three. There's the short-form annexation, which is what you are dealing with tonight, and then there are two types of long-form annexation, both the program of annexation and a voluntary long-form annexation, which is something that you would typically see, to the extent you can call it typical, on something like a discontinuous annexation or something of that nature. They are rare. They do happen. But for the sake of completeness, there are technically three types of annexation.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Before we adjourn, the applicant was promised the time to rebut. Would the applicant like to come forward, if that's appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the additional time. I appreciate it. Let me just touch base on a couple of the issues and then just make a closing statement, if you don't mind. Regarding the comment about tentative map, yeah, certainly acknowledge that unless it's a single-family, it's not tentative map, but I was just using that as an example, that at the end game, which here could be a commercial map, which could be a building permit, which could be another, a parcel map, number of items where sewer and fire, like you discussed tonight, happens that's really the end game. This is just the annexation, a voluntary annexation. I can respect staff's position about the sewer, right? We don't want, they probably don't want to set a precedent of, well, if we allow you in, or we recommend for you to come in, then there may be more folks who are trying to do the same. But I think we are not going to set a precedent here. I think this property is very unique in its circumstances in that 67 acres can't be developed. We're talking about 20. 14 acres are already deemed commercial. You heard about the sphere of influence and how maybe it was forced on the city or by a settlement agreement, but Commissioner VanderWaal made a great point. In the staff report, there must have been four or five lines about the public process that took place between Washoe County Planning Commission, Washoe County Workshops, planning staff, planning commission, Sparks Planning Commission Workshops, et cetera. So it wasn't forced, or if it was, there was a discussion about where it should go and why it should go there. And we're in the sphere, and that's very, very, very significant. In the, in the best interest of the City of Sparks, let me say this, is that, again, if I can just get the line. Actually, one point before I close with that, because I think that's, that's great. I'm just reading NRS 268, and the long form and the short form, there are two forms. One is the program which has these findings. I don't know what the municipal code requires or attempts to require these findings to be placed on a voluntary. That's contrary to state law, and state law prevails. It clearly says here, alternative procedures. An alternative to the procedures for initiation of annexation proceeding set forth here. Were treated just like if the city was doing their own annexation. The city's own annexation doesn't have to go through all of those findings. We don't have to go through all of those findings. We're already in the sphere, and this is voluntary. So in the best interest of the City of Sparks, we continue to hear, I think you've read some great articles in the paper, that the City of Sparks is open for business. I think you've heard the body above you, numerous folks say, the City of Sparks is open for business. You have a property owner who's in the sphere, who has a development opportunity, who wants to upgrade the roads, pay for sewer, and let me note, I believe what was referenced is more about upgrades than not connection, because you mentioned a great point about pro-rata share. Well, if we're attempting to go online by ourselves, that pro-rata share is all of us. That's all of us. But it's difficult to understand what our pro-rata share is until you know what our project is. So the sewer capacity study, it's not going to say, we can do 200 acres of multifamily or what have you. It's going to identify some capacity. Until, if we have to wait for annexation until the sewer report comes, we still don't have the question of what our project is. The next step is the zoning. That's when you start knowing what our project is and what the capacity is and what upgrades are required and what we have to pay, and even a used permit or a building permit. When the sewer report comes, and maybe this is a good question, Commissioner, about the why, sewer report comes in two months, we still know, don't know what our project is. We have to annex it and then come back with zoning. So I would argue this is more of a formality under the sphere of influence to deal with. Then we come back with the sewer report, zoning, here's our project, here's our capacity, here's our fair share, and acknowledge today a development agreement will likely be questioned. here's our fair share, and acknowledge today a development agreement will likely be required. So I think on behalf of my client, and working on many projects in, in Sparks and being born and raised here in Northern Nevada, that you have a property owner developer who's ready to improve Sparks, who's ready to add money to the coffers. And that's very important. You can't have money for more fire, you can't have money for more police officers, you can't have money for more sewer upgrades unless development occurs. And this development is fiscally responsible, fiscally positive, and will bring needed money into the funds to provide more services that Sparks severely needs. So thank you for additional time, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. We'll hear from any questions and we respectfully request your vote in approval tonight.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so yeah, a question, not for, but I would like from John.
Hi, John. So, so, so the question is, is we, we're going back and forth on this A through G and whether they're applicable or not. And, and I would just like to hear you discuss that a little bit more, which we were just told it's not applicable.
I think that Mr. Rundle might be the better one to answer this question. If you're talking to the actual.
Yes, the actual.
Particulars of how annexations are handled.
Right.
I'm happy to answer sewer.
Can I jump in?
Mr. Thornley, if you're prepared, by all means.
Is your question whether or not state law controls on the findings or the municipal code?
Yes.
Okay. So I've always wanted to talk about Dillon's Rule at a public.
Ah, there you go. There you go. Wonder recess.
My, I would typically agree that in the absence of authority to, to enact an ordinance, Dillon's Rule here in Nevada, or the modified Dillon's Rule that we operate under, precludes the city from doing so. I think in terms of making the best decision we can tonight, when you look at Cold Springs III, the Cold Springs case that dealt with annexation, it's unpublished. But what you'll see is when they get down to whether or not the Reno City Council abused its discretion in approving the annexation, what they did was look to the conditions imposed in the Reno Municipal Code. And they said, yes, the, the, the city council of Reno did in fact consider water and sewer when it did the following things. And on that basis, I depart from my colleague, and I do believe that the city of Sparks is able to impose, if not affirmative findings, certainly issues that must be considered during the planning commission's deliberation on the matter.
Okay. And you would have said that, right, John?
No, I would not have. That's why we had done.
But that's essentially that in finding two, A through G, are what we're really discussing here, whether they're valid for us to ask those questions. And you, you feel very strongly.
I do, I do feel very strongly that, that it is an appropriate inquiry by the planning commission. I also think, for the sake of clarity, we call them findings and certainly, for lack of a better term, I suppose that's what they are, but they are not affirmative in the sense that you need to be able to say, yes, this sewer will be provided on this date. That is not what these are. You need to consider the issue and, and it is your job, it is your role to weigh those things that you think are positive for the city versus those things that you think are negative versus those things that you think are uncertain. And then you need to make the, a decision that you think you can support with the evidence you've heard tonight. That there might be more than one conclusion to draw from the evidence. Unfortunately, that's the gray area in which you have to operate, you need to make the decision you feel most comfortable with.
Okay. In the sake of, we've called for a rediscussion and a rebuttal. I'd like to give a chance to reopen the public hearing, just to see if there are any public comments. So to open a public hearing, there being none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners for.
Um, I have some points I'd like to make, and one is why I agree with the recommendation of denial on some issues. One basically is the sewer capacity, that, that is not known yet. The other one is the, the location of the site is outside of the adopted level of service area for fire department response. And then the thing, another one I want to make is that the city cannot require as a condition of annexation, additional public improvements to be installed or constructed. The city will be required to annex half that road up to the point of access from Pyramid Lake Highway if the site were to be annexed. If the city annexes this site, the city will be responsible for services, including, as Jim brought up, road maintenance, code enforcement, fire and police services. And one thing that was brought up in the study session that really caught my eye is if a wildfire were to begin on that site with the annexation into the city of Sparks, then develop, land there, would, we'd have to provide the services and pay for the fire services to put that, that fire out. So, so with, with those points I made, that's, I mean, I, I'm going to agree with the, with the suggested motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just, for the sake of.
Clarity.
Clarity in the record.
Thank you.
With respect to wildfires, we are responsible for the percentage of the fire costs as it relates to the physical space within the boundary. So if the fire was 30% inside the city of Sparks, we are responsible for 30% of that cost.
Good.
That was not explained at the study session, but that is in fact the case, just for the clarity in the record, I'd want to.
So 30% of the 60-something acres or 30% of the?
30% of the whole fire.
Further comments from the commissioners?
I'm probably going to, I'm probably going to echo some what, of what Mr. Gordon has said, because I have heard, as everybody else has heard, that we have electives out there saying that the city of Sparks is open for business. So, yes, this is a very, very difficult decision whether to say yes or no, and I don't feel it's fair upon this planning commission that there's not something in the middle that we can come to an agreement on. And it's, it's just, it's a difficult decision. And to the attorney, regarding fire, as Commissioner Lean has said, the city of Sparks has a mutual aid agreement, though, also, correct? So if there was an issue with the fire, with fire on this piece of property, if it was annexed, does that mutual aid fall into effect?
In this instance, I would defer to Mr. Rundle, but I believe the information in the staff report is that regardless of the mutual aid agreement, this particular, these particular parcels are outside of six-minute response time from either agency.
That's correct. And on this map, that's why this is highlighted in red, Sparks, or, let's just get them up on the overhead, but the blue is the, the width of, or the polygon of where Fire Station 17 can provide a six-minute response time. And that ends just south of Tierra del Sol, about here. And our parcel is over here. So it's outside of any response time of any fires. It is outside of the adopted response time of the city of Sparks from any fire station.
Mr. Chair, can I do a follow-up to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. Rundle, if the property owner decided to, if and when this is ever annexed, that he puts commercial in there, does commercial in code require that there are sprinklers and does that mitigate fire response time?
That would be up to the fire chief.
On, on commercial buildings?
Yes, sprinklers are required.
Over 5,000?
Over 5,000 square feet.
Okay, but, okay, and then my question is, though, is by requiring that, would it mitigate response time? Because we've got sprinklers.
Response time is multifaceted. And I think that Mr. Martini is about to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, one thing to remember, our fire department doesn't just respond to fires. This six-minute response is also emergency, emergency response for someone having a heart attack, a car accident, whatever the fire department needs to be the first responders on. That's, so it makes it difficult. Certainly through building codes and sprinklers, we can, we can mitigate fire to some extent, but they are also our first responders to come help us if we get injured.
So the blue area is the, excuse me, is the extent of the protection district's area of response?
Of the six-minute.
Six-minute response. Yeah, I can bring the, please come forward, we need another chair, or somebody's loud.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, if my eyes aren't deceiving me, the tentative map you approved earlier is in the red. Portion of it appears to be in the red.
The tentative map for the previous agenda.
Correct, so there was a discussion regarding six minutes, et cetera. And maybe I'm wrong, but it just looks like it's right there on the border, if not in the red.
I thought that the records reflected that it would be served by Fire 17 in the protection district, but I think we should probably check the staff report unless Mr. Martini knows better.
This is Kylie, we're talking.
It doesn't affirmatively say whether or not it is inside the six-minute response time to Fire 17. It says it will be served by Fire 17.
Correct.
So, fire. It will, it will be served by Fire Station Number 6. It is included impact fee service area one, which is responsible for collecting the impact fees to provide the fire station. There are some differences here.
And for the record, Mr. Chair, if this property came in and was developed, we would be part of that impact fee district and we would contribute to that fund.
You need to disregard that comment. There's a lot to join in our impact fee system. It's not necessarily as simple as Mr. Gordon just stated. It's not completely voluntary.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's any more questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. And I'm going to bring up the sewer study now because, thank you, Mr. Martini.
Do you want me to go get it?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Thank you. So I guess my question is, is because it has been brought up in public comment that the sewer study, okay, it was commissioned per our staff report in 2015, I think March in 2015. And it, and whether whoever said what, that it was, you know, yes, it'll be a couple of months to review, but, and I understand there are no guarantees here, but are we providing borders or speed bumps to things happening because we're delaying, because we have to review something that there could be a possibility, a possibility, which could be an if, that we may have to have something corrected, something done, or something like this, so then we continue to push these things out?
I don't see it as a speed bump. I see it as a, a necessary comprehensive plan update that we need to do to understand where our infrastructure is. This, this board will be considering a lot of annexations coming up, particularly in this area we're talking about. As I mentioned before, this area is, the West Pyramid area is not an impact fee service area one, which has paid for the sewer system that's out there today. We can expand that impact fee service area. That takes a lot of work. It takes its own capital improvements plan. It has to come before you as a capital improvements advisory committee to counsel. It has to be recorded. It, it takes three years just to join the impact fee system, because we only update it every three years. If council gave direction to do an interim update, we could do that. I can't sit here and speak today for the city council. You will be seeing impact fee service area one update here pretty quick, just as an aside. The original schedule for the sewer study was two years. We have worked with our consultant to speed it up. We saw this coming. It's not just this property. We have properties east of, on, east of La Pasada as well that are in the other goalpost. We knew this is coming. The consultant spent nearly three and a half months just monitoring our sewer system. We actually put monitors in the pipes to understand what our current flows are. Our old model, being of older technology, was based in the commissioners, Commissioners Berber and Lean and VanderWaal, do you remember the RTC TASs? The traffic analysis zones that we used to use 15 years ago for planning? Our model was based on those TASs. We've asked, the new model be parcel-based, similar to what Dr. Smith is doing at Regional, so everything talks. It's a fully dynamic model. It will show effects of proposed changes on the complete system. So as I said earlier tonight, from the point wherever you're adding the sewer, all the way to the sewer treatment plant, all the way down. That's why I'm saying, to talk about proportional share of adding, I can't sit in front of the planning commission tonight and say, if we add another 100,000 gallons of sewage on a daily basis to this part of the pipe, that we're okay all the way to the treatment plant. But we will, we'll have that soon, we'll know. And we'll be able to describe to you, Mr. Gordon talks about, today's not the day for that discussion, it's another day. It's after annexation when we get to rezone. When, when we get to rezone and you're seeing the dream and all the neat things that come with the project, we're still going to be having a discussion of, do we have sewer? So the question is, when do you want to have that discussion? My preference is before we annex. You certainly can have your own opinion, but it, it's not going to go away. And I am confident, in a couple of months, we'll understand this model. It's huge. We are at the point right now where we are simply reviewing the assumptions the consultant has put into the model to see if we agree with those assumptions. But it is the entire city.
Perhaps, Long, may I please, I do want to get to you for a second, but perhaps this is a question for, for Mr. Rundle. The statement, the city has not annexed any land for which sewer capacity has not been allocated. That's, that's the definite.
Correct, and, and all of that was done from the 2005 sewer study.
Okay. Having said that, when I ask you, would, Mr. Garrett, would, would you say that that statement, I'm not going to ask you about its accuracy, but would you say that statement applies in your situation?
Mr. Chairman, I would not. I would say that applies to the annexation plan. I don't believe that applies to a vol, voluntary annexation. I would also note, I, with Mr. Thornley's clarification, which I agree with, I think we're saying the same thing, that under the statute and under the Cold Springs case law, that the, the findings are not legal findings that have to be made that were explained to you in the staff report. But you can consider sewer and fire. That's why I didn't have two slides of, here's voluntary, here's involuntary, ignore everything. Sewer was important to consider and so is fire. Sewer, I think you have a fail-safe on your municipal code that we pay our fair share. We can't pull the building permit without it. I think any responsible developer like Mr. Hamilton, sure is going to keep putting time and resources into this process unless he believes there's going to be sewer and there's going to cost for it. But I, I would still submit to you that why wouldn't we annex this property in now and then have the discussion when the sewer report comes out about what we're going to do? Because you're still not going to, even when you get the sewer results back, you're still not going to know what we're going to do. You're going to have an annexation plan, you're going to have an annexation application in front of you. You can't determine it's multifamily or storage or whatever. It's still just coming in and then you have the conversation. So this is just a step to get to the joint step of project level and sewer level, and you can condition the heck out of us with connectors and with impact fee zones to be annexed into, et cetera. We're ready, well, and able to do a development agreement, et cetera. So I don't believe there's any harm and we're asking to be annexed in today. There's no, there is no downside to the city to annex this property in today.
I overtalked you and I didn't mean you were going to make a statement. Was that the statement you were going to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it was.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Could you clarify that for me in terms of the sewer? Could you clarify that for me in terms of the sewer and the annexation?
Specifically?
Are we annexing under a program that requires sewer capability or not? That's the layman's question.
Sure. So the information that you've heard today, I suppose, is easily confused.
Thank you.
Certainly. What you heard staff tell you is that historically speaking, and as a matter of practice here in Sparks, the planning commission and the city council have expressed a preference for annexing parcels that can be immediately served with sewer. Yes.
Preference.
A, a preference for that, yes. The, the policy in the resolution, which is not the law, but is the stated preference of both this body and the, and the governing body, is to annex in that fashion. What you are hearing from the applicant is absolutely true. State law does not require you to provide sewer access at the time of annexation. That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon, I have a question. Do you and your applicant understand that if the annexation happens, that you are not guaranteed sewer service?
Yes, and we, we accept if some kind of statement like that is put into the annexation ordinance. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, Mr. Rundle? Now that we've gone through a lot of specifics in talking about this thing, the thing that we talked in the, in the study session, we'll all go back to, to this Title 20 and very specifics of what we can do as a group and what we can't. Can we one time again go through what this body can do? Could you go through that very specifically?
Mr. Chair, the municipal code, chapter 2005, the municipal code limits the, my interpretation, limits the planning commission's ability to make a recommendation to the city council to recommend approval of an annexation or recommend denial of the annexation.
So, so we don't have the latitude which, which we're getting into whether the sewer, right. We, we can.
Can you restate that, please? Can you restate that whole sentence?
We either have to prove it or deny it, or either.
Oh, oh, no.
We can't table it or?
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Exactly. Mr. Chairman, so, so specifically, you're feeling these A3, that those findings, and we either have to find them acceptable, or your feeling is that we have to deny it, right? If we can't, don't have evidence, evidence to prove, we're talking very specifically the sewer.
Yeah, staff's motion was based, the recommendation was denial, and I talked about it in my preliminary, or initial staff presentation, based on a lack of evidence. So it wasn't a, a like with, with prejudice type of, type of request. It was due to the lack of, of, of fine, lack of evidence. I think it's been explained this evening that the planning commission's responsibility is to consider the findings. Those findings are in the municipal code for a, for an annexation. So it is on the responsibility of the planning commission to consider those findings and whether or not the application request conforms with those findings or not.
Right, and, and I guess I have some frustration with this thing that, that because it's very specific that way, that even though I think you can mitigate certain things such as fire, you can do some of these things, I think all in all, it's a location in the long run, we want part of the city or, or I, I feel might be appropriate. What, what we're having here, we have, your feeling is we have to show, we have to consider these items, and you do not feel that you have that very specifically on the sewer. The fire we discussed, like we looked at another project, and maybe there are ways to mitigate, but, 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 but the real section here is the sewer, and, and normally what I would say from this point, what we've gone through here is, let's wait till we get the evidence, and I, I would want to table it. It, the frustration I have is, from what I, what I find here is, my hands are held that I can't do that item. And do you agree?
I do.
Yeah, but staff did not create that frustration, per se. I mean, you know. And I'm just, I'm just putting a fact here because the project is, or not the project, but the annexation of taking these with 40 acres and putting one house, yeah, this is not the thing, but very specifically, I keep going back to that, and it, and it's very frustrating to me, but, but you feel very strongly that we have a, that's all we can decide here.
And let's.
Go ahead.
Council's, Thornley feels differently on their, on their ability to recommend approval or denial.
No, I agree with your analysis. When you look at the ordinance, the planning commission is required to recommend approval or denial. And then the second part is that the city council may approve, deny, with or without prejudice, table or continue. And because the second part of the ordinance has included those specific things, the way we read the law here in Nevada, it excludes it from the first portion of the ordinance. So it's the.
And then if the city denies, then applicant has to wait a year to, to do a project which conceptually we all like.
They would have, can I, can I adjust that, Commissioner, or Chairman Camarato? They would have to wait a year before they could request annexation consideration.
Excuse me. And, and we're talking about actually city council, not this, if we deny it, if we recommend denial, it goes to city council?
Correct.
And that's a denial you're talking that would delay it for a year, right?
Commissioner Camarato asked, if the city council denies it as well, then it would be, and, and the state statute would come into play.
One year.
And require that the, the property owner wait one year for the request to annex again. But the city council, based on your discussion.
Right.
Commissioners Berber, the city council does have the authority to table the item or continue the item. They actually have the, the ability as the governing body to change, consider your recommendation and change it, yes.
No, it's, it's important to remember that the decision of this body this evening is not a final decision in any way, shape or form. It is simply a recommendation to the city council. They will make the final decision on this matter.
So, so you, you can see my frustration, I, I do not feel all the negatives of this thing. I keep getting hung up with that all we can say is, do we have enough evidence is what you're saying to, 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 for those considerations or not?
Yes.
Right? Okay. That's still my question.
Are we prepared to make a motion?
Well, I just have one other thing I'd like to say. On this, 100% voluntary annexation, it's in the sphere of influence, it's contiguous, all these things, and it is, but I keep coming back to the sewer. I just keep coming back to the sewer. And to answer your, to, I, I think to probably elaborate a little bit on your question, you asked Mr. Gordon of, does the applicant possibly, about the sewer, do you know that he may not get sewer? And he said, yes, I agree with that. Well, then why annex? It's because that's why you get the municipal services, which is, which is, one of them is sewer. And this developer at the current time may agree to that, but tomorrow, or in a month from now, he could sell it. And, I mean, just, you know, not saying he's going to, but it could be done, so that what was on the record here isn't relevant to that sale, in my opinion. So I personally agree with staff on the matter. Annexation at this current time, I think, right now, today, what we're, what we're faced with, doesn't, I don't think we can find the findings that we can offer those municipal services. And again, I agree with Commissioner Spurber that, not saying that this is a bad project, not saying that this is a great area for the city to annex, great area for the city to grow. I think, I think it is. I think that's, it's a great area to go, but with the unknown, that, that is the sewer report that, that is just an unknown to me, that I would like to see, moving forward with the city council's decision, that if the city council gets it, I would love to see them to continue this for the two months till that report is looked at by staff, looked at by this developer, looked by, looked at by everybody. So hopefully they could see that they could continue that.
I'm sorry, got to be redundant one more time, Mr. Thornley. "The city has not annexed any land for which sewer capacity has not been allocated." Your comment to that?
My comment to that is that, historically speaking, it has been the practice and preference of both this body and the city council to only annex where sewer services can be immediately provided. That is not to say that state law requires the immediate provision of sewer services. And so when you hear the applicant say, you are not obligated to provide sewer services upon annexation, that is correct.
Thank you.
It is.
The preference.
It is opposed by the historical practice of the city.
And state law in this case would trump city?
Well, yes and no. I mean, it, so, state law is, without a requirement, leaves it open for the city to determine for itself how it is going to, you know, grow its boundaries. What this body is tasked with doing this evening is, is weighing all of the information you've heard and making a decision that you believe is supported by the evidence in the record. Now whether that is to annex because you think, you know, this will resolve itself, whether it costs $100,000 or $70 million, that is, that is probably your choice under, under the law. What I think you hear is an applicant saying, this is going to be fine, trust me, and you hear staff saying, trust but verify, right? We think it's a good project, but we want the opportunity to confirm. As it relates to the policy choice, that's something you'll have to sort out for yourself.
Thank you for that clarification. Sorry about the redundancy.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. One more question. Mr. Martini, you may have to come up again. Apologize, we're spending a lot of time speaking tonight. Mr. Rundle, you may have to stay too, because I don't know. Okay, if I heard correctly, because of course, what I'm stuck on also is sewer, is the last time a sewer study was done was 2005. Correct?
The last documented accepted sewer study was done by Malcolm Burney in 2005.
Okay. Per code, state law, how often does a sewer study have to be done?
It is not included in state law.
Okay, so it's preference of the city, correct?
I would say it's a standard of the practice when we are, what, what kicked this one off was the models getting old, we're entering a comprehensive plan update, it's time to update the sewer study. We actually had it scheduled for during the recession, due to budgetary constraints, got pushed out a little bit. Council funded it in 2015 and, and we implemented, or we kicked off the contract to get it going.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's what I need, thank you very much.
Can I ask one more question? And, and one thing again, and then, and then we get to the point here, and I just want to go through this again. You know, I, I would feel nice getting these things and writing the, the, the items, which is normally, we would do that by putting conditions, getting agreements. I, I am extremely frustrated that I can't just do that and solve this, is what, and that's correct, right? That I can't put any conditions on this.
Correct.
And that's your.
That's correct.
That's, and so, so, you know, so we could handle some of these items and, but.
Does the applicant want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgence.
The annexation is approved via an ordinance. My understanding is it's the city's preference not to condition ordinances, but nothing legally would prevent you from either putting language in where we're acknowledging in the ordinance that we're not guaranteed sewer, which would run with the property, so any future owner or owners would have to assume that, and/or some stronger language could be put in ordinance as well. And again, I will put on the record today, given the sewer concern, if this body was inclined to approve it with a statement in the ordinance, there's not to be a condition if we're worried about that word, but a statement which would run with the property, property owner and applicant acknowledge that the approval of this annexation does not guarantee sewer service to this property or any additional entitlements at this time. Again, it would run with the land, and it's fair to everyone, and everyone knows that that's the concern, and we could deal with it at a later time. So, Mr. Spurber, I don't know if that helps you, but we're happy to do so.
That would be on an ordinance? How, how would that, what would be the vehicle that you would do that on?
So, again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, so you've been referring to in your staff report tonight, a resolution that was approved, where you're saying sewer has to be included, right? That's how staff's interpreting it. This is very similar, an ordinance is very similar to a resolution, where you have some whereas's, whereas's, and then have language. So I don't think anything prevents you tonight to approve this and have a statement in there about your concern, which would run with the land and which would protect the city and us, and be able to move the cart forward with the annexation, knowing that when we get a project, we have to prove it up.
We, we have, yeah, could we get a city comment to that?
Well, I, yeah, I was wondering if.
How about Legals?
I, I disagree with that analysis. I don't believe that the city has the ability, excuse me, to condition the annexation on future occurrences. The difference between a resolution and an ordinance is that an ordinance is effectively the statute of the city. It is the law. And so it will be enforced like the law, and while I can certainly appreciate the willingness to accept conditions on the annexation, I think we all can. I think we can all look at that and say, gosh, that's great, that you're willing to pay for the sewer, that you're willing to take that risk, that you're willing to do these things. But I, I don't think, both as a matter of policy and as a matter of law, that the city is able to condition what is effectively the law of the land on a future unknown.
My question to you, we spent a lot of time hearing, you know, from the applicants and, you know, advisor, would it be possible to bring the applicant forward to have the applicant speak to this?
This goes to public hearing.
Well, he's the applicant, so you can come forward. It is, it is a meeting. I think by way of illustration on the conditions, commission members, I, so to illustrate the difficulty, if you slap the conditions on it and then it doesn't pencil, or it doesn't for some reason develop, that we can't have the boundary of the city shifting back and forth on, on that basis.
We're stuck with it.
And so you're stuck with it.
And, Mr. Chairman, what I was trying to get to was not necessarily a condition, but language, like similar to recitals in the contract where you're setting the stage. I don't think it'd be improper to have language about what the applicant is acknowledging or that sewer reference is made. Something to that effect, I think, would hopefully get this body comfortable and still meet the law.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to forward a recommendation of denial to the City Council of the annexation request associated with PCN 16037 to annex 67.40 acres into the city of Sparks, Nevada, based on findings A1 through A4 and the lack of evidence supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, can we have discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we?
Are we done?
It's a little late for discussion.
All right.
We have a motion that's been seconded.
We've got a motion that's been voted on.
Yes, excuse, we call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. But if I, there, reach to...
What you could do, if you want to have discussion, is that you could have a motion for reconsideration by one of the three who prevailed on the matter. But that is...
Well, we have a motion, and it's been agreed to, and are you saying I should see?
I'm saying if you want to have discussion on the matter as per Commissioner Vanderwell's request, the method in which you would do that is to request a motion for reconsideration from one of the three who voted affirmatively on the last motion.
Okay, I will ask for a motion.
You didn't vote again, it'd have to be from one of us three.
I'm going to ask, you would...
I'll make a motion to reopen the discussion.
To reconsider.
To reconsider the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Fueens. I just want to put on the record, because I concur with Commissioner Spurber with the fact that this is a difficult situation, I feel that we've been put in a difficult position, and with the downfall of the market and things like that, having to bring forward a sewer study that we were not financially viable to do, I feel is going to be at the detriment of moving anything forward. And that is the reason that I am voting against what was recommended.
And I'd like to make a comment before we vote on this also, is the same thing, I am so frustrated because I feel, when I go through this, that I don't have that latitude to do anything. I would like council to know that I feel, and I think some of, maybe some of the others feel strongly, that this is, that there are ways at this project, and it is a good, not project, but this annexation is a good thing, but we, this body, I don't feel that I have the methods to do it, but I want that to go in the record to the council.
Go in front of him when it goes in front of him, don't.
Well, that's in a later, but, so that comment, I want that to be in there very strongly. I don't know if others maybe agree with me that that is, this project is something that...
For clarification, what are you...
Requesting...
What I'm requesting is that when this goes, that in the report, and put that myself and maybe some other people feel there's some validity to this project, but I feel that I'm...
Right.
Okay. Do I...
So you have a motion, you have a discussion.
Now we're voting.
Well, what you would vote is not necessarily on the project, but you vote on whether or not you want to reconsider it. And so it would be my advice that if the three members who voted affirmatively on the last motion, Commissioner Fueens, Commissioner Lean, Commissioner Spurber, if none of you are inclined to change your vote on that, it would be my preference that you allow the pending motion for reconsideration to die for lack of second.
Do you like that one?
Motion fails.
Right. Thank you for your time tonight.
One more period of public comment.
We're still on the agenda, folks, so comments from the commissioners.
Actually, you have one more period of public comment.
Oh, yeah, let's get the public... One more, let me reverse that back. Item number 11, public comment. This is for general public comment, limited to items that do not appear on the agenda, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator pursuant to NRS 241- excuse me, period 020. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item until the matter has been specifically included on the agenda. Is there any public comment? There being none, back to the dais, comments from the commissioners.
Is Commissioner Bowles still here?
Any comments? Well done, very difficult topic. Call for adjournment?
A move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. O's. Meeting adjourned.